Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the Select Board, respective town staff, those here attending in person, those watching at home, and welcome back to the April 11, 2022 Exeter Select Board Meeting. I'm going to start by introducing the Board. To my right is Select Woman Livi Rontrioloff. Good evening.
Good evening.
To my left, Clerk Select Woman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Good evening.
Select Woman Nancy Belanger. Good evening.
Good evening.
We also have Select Woman, our Vice Chair, Select Woman Molly Cowan, who is zooming in. Molly, can you hear us?
She's muted.
She's muted. Molly, you're muted.
You need to unmute her.
Molly?
Molly.
That's me. Okay, well, while Molly works that out, we have our Town Manager, Mr. Rustin. Good evening, Mr. Dean.
Hello and good evening.
Hi, Exeter. Can you hear me?
Oh, we can hear you now faintly.
Chairman Papakostandis, can you hear me?
We can hear you very faintly. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Also with us this evening are Recording Secretary Joanna Bartel. Good evening, Joanna.
And I'm Nico Papakostandis.
Hello?
Molly, we've got Garrett coming out for one sec. Oh, there you are. I can see you. Molly, can you try one more time?
He's showing he's muted on the screen.
Yeah.
Looks like you're still muted, Molly.
Hello?
Hi, that's a lot better. Can you hear us? Guess not. Molly?
Is she in a different time zone?
No.
Hello?
Hi, Molly.
She can't hear us.
Yeah.
I don't think so.
Molly?
Molly?
No, no, let's do that.
We'll have feedback.
Hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you hear me now? She can't hear me now because I went back to the mute, but if we don't mute, we get that echo. Let me try this one. Nope. This has worked before for other committees. I've seen it. I don't know.
It's not working, to be honest. Can you turn the sound off of that one?
This is her call. Hello? Hi. No, we hear you. Can you hear us? Okay. Yeah, I think we can. Do you want to put her on speakerphone?
You can do that.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So I will keep you on my phone.
Okay.
Okay. Now, if Select Woman Cowan wants to speak to something, should I put the phone up to the mic so it captures it, or? So if Joanna needs to go back, or?
Yeah. I think you can try that. I mean, I don't know if it's going to echo off of the microphone or not.
Well, we'll certainly try it.
Yeah.
Do we have to do roll call votes?
Roll call votes, and we have to ask if she's by herself, or? And then it wasn't reasonably practical to be here in person.
Okay. All right, so Select Woman Cowan, we have you on my cellphone on speakerphone.
All right.
When we vote, we'll have to do a roll call vote.
That's fine.
And if you could just tell us, excuse me, whether you are alone in the room that you're in right now and that it is, your presence via Zoom is unavoidable.
My presence via Zoom is unavoidable. I am not alone in the room, but you all are on, I'm wearing earbuds, so the Amtrak train passengers can only hear me. They can't hear you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Now that we have that sorted, open it up to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in with any comments to the Board. And I don't see any public, so we will move on from there. There are no proclamations or recognitions this evening, so at this time, I would call for the approval of the regular Select Board meeting minutes of March 28, 2022, but first ask the Board if there are any revisions or amendments. Okay, then seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Exeter Select Board regular meeting minutes of March 28, 2022.
Slow mo, second.
It's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Select Woman Rontrioloff?
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan?
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We don't have any appointments this evening, so we'll jump right into discussion items. And we have a guest this evening and also a PowerPoint presentation regarding the Regional Housing Needs Assessment and Survey. With us this evening, we have Sarah Tatarzik. Good evening, Sarah.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to be here. Thank you all for having me. My name is Sarah Tatarzik, and I am a Regional Planner with the Rockingham Planning Commission, and I'm here to provide an update on the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. So tonight, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation. I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. I know you have a long agenda. And I'm essentially just going to kind of give the Board an overview of where the project is going, kind of what we've done so far, where the public process is at, and then answer any questions and maybe have a little bit of a discussion if we have time.
Terrific, thank you.
All right. So what is a Regional Housing Needs Assessment? So the Regional Housing Needs Assessment is, it's a large project. So we started this project this past fall, September of 2021, and it's running all the way through December of 2022. So we will have our final deliverable product by the end of this calendar year. So Regional Housing Needs Assessment provide, is going to provide current regional and local data on housing trends and needs. We'll be identifying housing opportunities and barriers for populations across income levels and demographics across the Rockingham Planning Commission's planning region, so the 26 communities that we represent within Rockingham County. We'll begin to discuss solutions and gather resources for communities to address housing barriers. And then the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, ultimately, it will be a tool for communities to use when they're addressing and discussing housing challenges and solutions in the future. So that's the goal. So, like I said, we started this project back in the fall of 2021. In February, we sort of officially launched the public process. So there's been quite a bit of work that's been happening kind of behind the scenes. And then I think a lot of our communities are starting to see this past February and March, we've kind of been coming out of our shell and talking to the public, and we've released a survey, and we're doing a bunch of outreach, which I'm going to go over this and we're doing a bunch of outreach, which I'm going to go over this evening. So what happened kind of behind the scenes over the fall? So the Housing Needs Assessment, we are completing one for the Rockingham Planning Commission's region. But there's actually regional housing needs assessments happening statewide. So all nine regional planning commissions across the state are completing a housing needs assessment for their specific planning region at the same time. So this is being kind of worked together in collaboration with the Office of Planning and Development, kind of helping to oversee the coordination of the nine RPCs. So starting this past fall, we worked with the nine other RPCs, regional planning commissions, as well as the State Office of Planning and Development, to create a common framework for the document. So ultimately, all nine regional housing needs assessments will have some sort of kind of common structure or kind of common framework that we're building off of. That way that across the state, we have kind of comparable documents to work with and more of a statewide data set. So we created that document outline. We also identified common data metrics, which I'll talk a little bit more later on in the presentation. So we've been having what were weekly statewide meetings and now our bimonthly working group meetings to kind of make sure that we're coordinating across the nine RPCs. We also created subcommittees, which are kind of designated to work on different components of the project. So there was a subcommittee specifically to build out the surveys, a subcommittee to talk specifically about public outreach. We have a subcommittee that's working specifically to design the toolbox, which will ultimately kind of house all of our community tools and recommendations and frameworks at the end of the project. Okay, so the public process. As I mentioned, this past February, we sort of officially launched the project to the public. That launch started with a project webpage, which is housed on the Rockingham Planning Commission's webpage. That includes a general public survey, which you all, I'm sure, have seen a little bit of. And we also have a survey that is specifically targeted at employers in the region. And then there's a list on the slide, which I'll talk a little bit more about, four other kind of surveys or different stakeholder groups that we're engaging with. And in addition to kind of this, this public outreach online, so these surveys and questionnaires that we're launching that are targeting specific stakeholders, we've also created an advisory group, which will be helping the project kind of go through from start to finish. We are going to be hosting specific focus groups later this spring, and we'll also be having one-on-one interviews with different stakeholders, which I will touch upon. So as I mentioned, kind of things that are happening currently, we have our project webpage up, which houses all of the background information on regional housing needs assessment. It also houses the general public community survey, the employer survey. And then we've already started to meet with our advisory committee, which is made up of various stakeholders, which have been really informative and helpful to kind of guide this process throughout. So we have two developers on the committee, one private and one nonprofit developer. We have municipal representation on the committee, a local business owner, a real estate agent, and a housing advocate that make up that committee, which has been really helpful. Coming up, we have just launched within the last couple of weeks kind of our municipal targeted engagement. So we did recently send out an online questionnaire that went to all of Rockingham Planning Commissions, town planners, planning boards, select boards, other economic development staff and people of that nature to kind of provide some input on us of what different, what communities are actually facing when it comes to housing and what's actually happening kind of on the ground. So getting into a little bit more specifics than just the general public survey. And then coming up, we'll be having focus groups and roundtable discussions. So based off of our survey results. So we've had the general public survey open now for about six weeks, I want to say, and it'll be open until the end of April. And based off of the results of that survey, we'll be kind of figuring out who we haven't heard from. So making sure that we take time to do targeted outreach. So if, for example, if we haven't heard from enough of seniors, you know, a representative group of seniors, we're going to make that extra outreach in time to make sure that we go and hear from that group, that population group. So those focus groups and discussions will be specifically based off of who's missing, so what voices we haven't heard yet. And then we will also be having a summer, I'm hoping for either June or July, an open event that will kind of be what we've heard from the survey. So we'll sort of reflect back on what we've heard from folks, both from the general public survey, the employer survey, as well as the municipal engagement questionnaire. Call it a questionnaire because it has a lot of open-ended questions. So it's a little bit more in-depth than just a survey. And then, as I mentioned, we have three other surveys that are kind of coming down the pipeline. So we have a developer survey, property managers and landlord survey, as well as a social service provider survey that'll be coming out later, probably early summer. And the timeline on that is kind of dependent on the statewide working group that I mentioned. So the creation of all of these surveys has been done in collaboration with the nine RPCs. So our general public survey that's out and live on the website today and that we've kind of been pushing out and hoping that people actually getting a decent amount of responses coming in, that survey is identical to the other nine RPCs or eight RPCs surveys that have gone out to the general public. So at the end of this project, we'll have kind of this statewide group of data that we can reflect back on. So the surveys, I know the Board was curious to hear a little bit more about kind of exactly what we're aiming for with the surveys. So I have copies of our general public survey here today. And I've also listed on the top of the slides that I did hand out to the Board, and we can email these out as well. There's a link to the municipal questionnaire that I would love for folks to be able to go in and fill out as well. But I thought it would be useful, since we have kind of so many surveys and questionnaires that we're releasing, to just go through each one briefly and talk about, you know, what the status of it is and what the primary objectives of those surveys are, since there are six of them. So as I mentioned, we've started with the general public survey. That is common questions across all the RPCs, with some additional regional specific questions kind of added towards the end to make sure that we've hit our Rockingham Planning Commission region. The objectives of this is, it's kind of broad. So it's a general public survey. It's a community survey. We really want to try to get a sense of what current and future housing needs are there in the region are. So what challenges are people who live here or work here or work here and want to live here? What challenges are those people facing? Or what successes are they facing? You know, not everything is a challenge. So we're also identifying housing barriers community members are facing when securing housing. So that can be a barrier that people are facing when they're trying to move into the region. It can be a barrier that someone is facing as they, you know, try to continue to age in the region or start a family here, different points of their life. And then understanding the perception of housing need among the communities. So it's also good to know, you know, does everybody, what do people think? Do we have a housing challenge? What's happening? You know, what are the perceptions of people who have maybe lived in the region and been not necessarily involved in the housing market in recent years? And maybe they're not as clued in into what's going on in the market or in the rental market. So that's the general public survey. As I mentioned, that will be open and live on our website until the end of April. And we also have paper copies. So if there is anyone who'd like to fill out a paper copy, we can certainly provide those. Then we've also released our municipal representative questionnaire, which is sort of, it's sort of designed in the form of interviews. So this is an original template that was once again created as a common template across all nine RPCs. And the objective of these is to determine who needs housing and what types of housing may be needed in specific communities. And then identify different approaches to addressing regional and local needs. So are there communities within our region that are maybe trying innovative approaches to addressing the housing challenges? Whether that be policy, you know, education, whatever it might be. And similarly, identifying any regional, local barriers to housing, including what could be zoning or municipal policies. And then we also have an employer survey live. So as I mentioned, that one also is common questions across all the RPCs. And this is really asking about how housing conditions are impacting employers' abilities to attract and retain workers in the region. And then what type of housing solutions might be appealing to employers? What type of housing solutions might employers be interested in being involved with us in trying to address? And then the last three that are coming out later this, this summer, and I say that because these are actually all happening kind of in coordination with the statewide group. And the reason for that is there's, there's active, there has been active developer outreach done really recently by the Office of Planning and Development, as well as some other groups. And we want to make sure that we're not asking the same questions multiple times. So we're kind of building on the recent outreach that has been done specifically to developers to try to gain, you know, information on the impacts of development, local climate and conditions, and opportunities to improve those conditions. So we have some of those results already. And now we're trying to figure out, you know, how do we take that to the next level and ask the follow-up questions that need to be addressed with developers? Property managers and landlords, similarly, New Hampshire Housing is releasing their, I believe it's an annual rental survey, which is the largest survey of rental information across the state that happens on an annual basis. So that, I believe that survey just went live. So we're kind of holding off on ours because we want to start to get the results of that survey and see what we're missing and then do any follow-up information there. And then the social service providers survey. Similarly, this is going to be done in collaboration with the Community Development Finance Authority because they were already starting to work on a statewide survey for social service providers. So this could be housing authorities, it could be community organizations, it could be people that offer housing services, those types of organizations. And really, the purpose of that survey is to start to understand system capacity function, geographic availability, and understanding where we can improve and address opportunities and challenges. Okay, data metrics. This is one of my last points, and then I'll open it up for any questions. So the data metrics, as I mentioned, we have been kind of compiling the data metrics in the common framework with the statewide working group. We've identified 85 unique data metrics that will be in this document. The sources will be from the Decennial Census, American Community Survey, as well as local state sources. So New Hampshire Department of Education, New Hampshire Housing, local municipalities, et cetera. We've also identified a few regional specific data points that we want to make sure we include in our Rockingham Planning Commission Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And for example, two of those metrics are accessory dwelling units. Obviously, we all know that the accessory dwelling unit law passed in recent years. So it'd be really interesting to take a look at how that's impacted our communities. And also talking about senior housing, looking at senior housing for 55-plus rather than just 65-plus, since we know that there's a lot of 55-plus units in our region. And another point I wanted to make on this slide, I also participate in the Exeter Housing Advisory Committee. And the committee is looking at updating their housing report. And we actually have a lot of overlapping data metrics. Like almost all of them, except for a handful, will be included and updated in our Regional Housing Needs Assessment. So that committee is kind of pumping the brakes and waiting to update their report because a lot of it will be done through this project. Should be nice to have. And then lastly, one kind of final output that's going to be coming out of this report is what we call the Housing Needs Projection. So this is where we actually start to look at and think about how many housing units are actually needed in our region and where those can be allocated and where those could be constructed based off of, you know, constraints, infrastructure, buildable land, things like that. And we're actually working on this Housing Needs Projection with, when I say "we," I mean all nine RPCs. The statewide working group is working on building this Housing Needs Projection model with a third-party consulting firm called Root Policy Research out of Colorado. So they'll be helping us kind of build a model that will ultimately be interactive and useful, something that communities can take and kind of plug and play and use as a tool moving forward. And that's really it. So happy to answer any questions. I'd also love, I don't want to take too much time on the agenda, but if anyone on the Board has any comments about kind of housing in Exeter and how it's impacting the work that you all are doing, I'd also love to hear that. I know I do sit on the, or I do participate in the Housing Advisory Committee meeting, so I feel a little bit plugged into Exeter, which has been really nice. But yeah, if there are any questions or comments, I'd love to take them.
Great. Well, thank you first of all for this presentation. Very informative. Go down the line here, Select Woman Belanger.
So I am currently on the Housing Advisory Committee as the Select Board Rep, but I have been part of that committee since the inception of it in 2015. This is going to be a really important aspect of the work we've been doing to update. We started to work with Darren Wyndham, our Economic Development Director, in February of 2021. And we interviewed a lot of our local businesses and how their problems with hiring and housing were kind of clashing for them. So we've taken that information. We're going to have a smaller forum next month to talk to some local businesses and community leaders and see where that conversation leads us. But between what Sarah is doing that will help us, not just for our region, our neighboring towns, to see what we can do to work together to help our needs, see what those are and what we can do collaboratively. But then our town planner is also starting some working on zoning issues and things like that. So we're all hoping, or our Housing Advisory Committee anyway, is hoping that between Sarah's, the Rockingham Planning Commission's report, what's happening in other areas, that we can have, our local forum is going to expand and see if people can just sit down together and brainstorm and see what our needs at and what our solutions could be. So thank you, Sarah. And I want to plug the survey. It is on our town website under latest news. If you haven't taken the survey, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. And isn't there going to be a forum?
We have a forum. I want it May 6. Thank you. It's invite-only this time.
I see.
Because of COVID, we've had to move it.
Okay.
Once or twice. And the numbers keep fluctuating. So we've decided to keep this one invite-only and smaller. And again, just like we did with the invitations that Darren did with our local businesses, we took each meeting and spent the second half of that meeting talking about what we learned and where we wanted to go next. So that's the goal this time, too.
Okay.
We're trying to approach this without any preconceived.
Fantastic.
Ideas and approach.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Select Woman Gilman?
Where to begin? I really appreciate the work that all the RPCs are putting in together. My, my questions really have to do, I'm a representative at the State House and I sit on the Municipal and County Government Committee. And you're probably well aware of the crazy things that we have gotten. And we heard SP 329, which was establishing a committee to study barriers to housing in New Hampshire. And frankly, I'll tell you, it'll probably not pass out of my committee because it's another study commission that people don't like anymore. But the governor had a task force on housing, didn't he? And nothing came of that?
So yes, the Council on Housing Stability is maybe the task force you're referencing. So one of their goals, recommendations that came out of their report in, I think they came, they released like a strategic plan-type report in 2020, I believe. And one of the action items was to update the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. So that is kind of part of our backstory. Regional housing needs assessments, under kind of the Rocky, or the Regional Planning Commission umbrella, are typically required to be updated every five years. But they're not necessarily always funded every five years. There's no, you know, built-in funding that is reoccurring. So what came out of that task force, as well as the American Rescue Plan funds, was the monies to be able to do these reports. Yeah.
It just sounds to me like people are not communicating very well. You know, the groups that are doing the work and the groups that want to see the work done but don't know how to say it, I guess. So no, I really appreciate that, getting this information, particularly how it might be. We do want to regionalize, but how do we do that when we know each town knows what they need? So I'm looking forward to seeing that.
Great, yeah, thank you. And yeah, I would just add two quick points to that one. So the Office of Planning and Development and BEA has kind of been working really hard to coordinate all of these efforts based off of exactly what you mentioned, kind of the communication back and forth. So I'm also participate in like a monthly housing initiatives call, which is basically gathering like the statewide players who are all doing these types of reports and work, as well as what's happening, you know, in Concord and making sure that we're and making sure that we're all kind of keeping each other informed. And my primary goal from this report is to have it not just be another study and making sure that, that's part of the reason why I felt very strongly we needed an advisory committee that had an employer and, you know, developers and real estate agents and those folks on it because they're on the ground and they're the ones who can kind of help us bring it from a study to the next level. Yeah, I completely agree.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Rantrell?
No, I'm not. Thank you.
No, thank you again. I think it is important. You know, you talked earlier about how does it help us do our job? But I think, you know, you coming, approaching it from a region and also as a community and collaborating with all of the stakeholders, you know, the business leaders, the developers, seniors 55 and older. So thank you. And you're welcome back whenever you'd like to give us an update on your surveys. We'd love to hear it.
Definitely, yes. And please, if you haven't already filled out the General Public Survey as well as the Municipal Survey, the link for that is on top of the handouts I gave you all. And I'm also happy to email out copies of the slides or anything that you guys need. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Next on our agenda this evening, we have a conservation easement. And we have Kristin Murphy here to speak to this. Good evening, Kristin.
Hello, everyone. So I'm Kristin Murphy, the Conservation and Sustainability Planner. This is the first time I've said that for the town of Exeter.
Sounds wonderful.
Yeah. It's a bit of a mouthful, but that's okay. I'm here to talk to you tonight about, in your packet, you received a deed for conserving a large parcel that is affiliated with the Gateway property. It's the very back portion, if you're familiar with that, or other people refer to it as the King property because it used to be owned by Kevin King. It is a 43 and 1/2 plus or minus acre parcel. And it was a part of the planning board application for the Gateway property fronting on Epping Road. Your packet includes plans of the property. And if you look at the front sheet, you can see this parcel does not actually front on Epping Road, but it does front on Energy Way, which is off of, who is Commerce? Which is off of Commerce. So out toward Unitil and Gourmet Gift Baskets. So just to give you a little bit of orientation to where we're talking about. This property was offered up as a portion of the wetland mitigation required with the state wetland dredge and fill permit for the development of the Gateway property. And conserving a portion of the lot is also a condition of approval on the planning board's conditional approval letter. It was presented to the Conservation Commission back in June of 2020. And they established a subcommittee to work on refining the language of the deed as well as condition, and conditionally approved accepting the property as long as that committee was on board with the language and legal counsel approved the document. So it has been before the planning board. It has been before the Conservation Commission. This property is exciting to the Conservation Commission. It was logged when it was owned by Kevin King, so it is a very transitional habitat right now. It's a recovering forest. There are some woods, roads throughout. But it has upwards of 10-plus vernal pools on the property, which is a very important resource for us. And it is abutting a very significant wildlife corridor that connects basically Oakland's through Bloody Brook to the Connor Wildlife Farm Management Area, which is a New Hampshire Fish and Game property. This abuts that, and then that connects to the Little River Conservation Area. So it is really a significant block of undeveloped habitat. It also supports habitat for some state species of concern like black racer, wood turtle, and spotted turtle. And as proposed, the deed is open to passive recreation only by foot traffic. So bicycles would not be allowed, ATVs, none of that would be allowed. Hunting in season is proposed to be allowed. And a portion of that is because that's been a historic use of the property. But also the abutting lands managed by both New Hampshire Fish and Game and with the Conservation Commission all allow hunting. And so it thought, the commission felt it would be very challenging to have this abstract line in the sand where hunting no longer is allowed. And that's typical of how we manage conservation lands. If we accept an abutting property, we tend to try to make sure those uses match. So this has been, I think I mentioned, this has been reviewed by legal counsel and is here before you with a recommendation for acceptance.
Okay, thank you.
I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about it.
Before we get to questions, I think we have Selectwoman Cowan back on Zoom. Selectwoman Cowan, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great.
Terrific. Thank you. Since we have you, do you have any questions for Kristin?
I don't have any questions about this easement. It sounds great.
Great, thank you. Any questions of Kristin from the board? It sounds like a nice usable property.
Great.
And then Mr. Dean?
Yeah, I just had a question of Kristin real quick. Can you discern between the developable piece and the conservation piece? Like what is the conservation piece? It looks like it's 43 acres.
Yeah, so if you look in your packet, this is a good size to share. But if you look in your packet, so this is the conservation piece. This middle part is where the residential development is proposed and the commercial development is proposed for this front portion.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then I would entertain a motion that the Select Board accept the grant of 43.6 acres on the west side of Epping Road, shown as tax map 47 Lot 7-1.
So move a second.
It's a motion to second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
Discussion?
Yes.
We need to have a designate for signing any documents?
The board needs to sign this.
All right.
All the members of the board do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So motion to second, no discussion. So Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Rantrell?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan? I'll come back. Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. And Selectwoman Cowan?
So she's talking. She's muted again.
No, we lost her. Oh wait, she's, hold on. One second. Selectwoman Cowan, can you hear us?
Yes, I'm back. I vote aye.
Okay. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Kristin.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda item is a discussion on the public safety complex alternatives. As we know, we had a public safety facilities work done, so warrant article, Mr. Dean, two years ago?
Uh, yes.
Okay. And that work has been done. Consultant worked closely with town planner Dave Sharples, Chief Poole and of the Police Department, Chief Wilking, and also the Facilities Committee. And we have Chief Poole in here, Chief Wilking, Mr. Sharples. And we also have the Chair of the Facilities Committee, Chris Weeks, here. But essentially, reading through the packet, there are several options that are being discussed. One of which was option one, I believe, which was a hybrid that would put the Police Department out on some land, on Continental Drive, and it would include a fire substation. The advantage of that would be building a police, a newer police station, bigger police station, ADA accessible, and following the suggestions in the Facilities Public Safety recommendation. The idea of having a substation out there would also create storage for future vehicles that the fire department will need. We saw last year during budget season and also just in Chief Wilking, some of the discussions you've had in the last couple of board meetings, that a lot of the new fire apparatus, vehicles, machines will not fit in the current garage that we have in the future. So by building a substation, it would allow for storage of some of these vehicles. Option B of the hybrid plan would then be to renovate the current public safety building to accommodate the fire department. So your fire department would be downtown and you'd have the police station out off of 27 on Continental Drive with a substation. One of the other options that the Facilities Committee has been discussing lately is utilizing the soon-to-be vacant rec building on Court Street as possibly housing the police station there. We've already heard from abutters. You know, if you move closer to where the rec building is now, you are in a neighborhood. And so we've already heard from several abutters with some pretty, I believe anyways, some reasonable reasons to object. I'm sure we'll hear from more. And the other concern I have would be, are we satisfying the needs of the police department long-term? In other words, are we going to be getting value 20, 25, 30 years down the road? Or are we going to have to start over? Whereas if you build a new facility from scratch on 27, you know, I also think just looking at preliminary numbers from a budget standpoint, by doing it in phases and not tearing down or renovating older buildings, you're getting more bang for your buck long-term. I think it's a better value. But the reason we're bringing it up tonight is to sort of help the parties involved, the town planner, the chiefs, the Facilities Committee, understand where the Select Board feels that this should be concentrated on. And I saw, Selectwoman Gilman, you perked up when I mentioned the building. We may run into...
That's a no-go thing right there.
I was just going to say some objection to raising a historic building. So just putting that in perspective, that's why it's on a discussion item for this evening. I think it's important that the board weigh in on where we think the focus should be and then have all parties involved go back to the consultants and kind of work in that direction. So we'd open it up for discussion amongst the board, but also offer up to Mr. Sharples, did I miss anything on that? Or anything that you want to?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, all right. Any, either of the chiefs want to speak to this before?
We're absolutely willing to answer any questions you may have. But we too read the report from Town Planner Sharples and we're here to offer anything we can to help make an informed decision as far as what goes on, as far as what we support and what we don't. We have our, obviously, we have our thoughts and how this might go. But I'm, we're as interested as anyone is as how you feel you want to weigh in. And then we'd be more happy to kind of have a dialogue or see what we can help with.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one thing. You clearly articulated the 3032 Court Street and, you know, a PD only there and looking for direction because if you go that route, it impacts the rest of the project. Because if you do a PD only at 3032 Court Street, you are not going to do a fire substation at 3032 Court Street, A, because of the size of the lot, B, it's 100 yards from the existing station. So when we were looking at it, you know, when we're not looking at a standalone fire substation out on 6 Continental, we haven't gone there. But that might, you know, the 3032 Court Street, that decision might, you know, have some tentacles effect and we'd have to look at other things. The second item that we're looking for direction on is the fire substation. The Facilities Advisory Committee suggested breaking them out at 6 Continental. And we already had done that. We'd already asked for numbers, like to see which one would cost. But if a fire station is, say you did a new PD and a fire substation at 6 Continental, the fire substation would alleviate some of the deficiencies that are downtown at 20 Court Street. But if you didn't do that, those deficiencies in 20 Court Street would remain. So what we do for renovations to 20 Court Street is directly related to if there's a substation out on 6 Continental. So they're all connected. So we're looking for direction on those two things so we know, you know, how to move forward and spend our, you know, funding that we have on the study in the best possible, most efficient way.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So David, what you just said, I hope I can ask this question correctly. The idea of the substation was the response time on the outskirts of town. If, for example, we took the current complex and turned that into the police department, it wouldn't be a substation for the fire department because it's not big enough, the lot's not big enough, correct?
You mean 3032 Court?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. You'd have to raise, yeah. They, LBA did a test fit of the site and found it inadequate size to even house a police station. However, in the FAC, you know, so you made a good point. You can always modify things and go vertical instead of horizontal and, you know, adjust, adjust the, you know, work within the site constraints and try to make it work. And that's what they asked to do to kind of, but it would necessitate raising the entire site, demolishing all three, all three buildings. Yeah, you'd have to get rid of all three buildings, the rec department, the garage, and the senior center and so forth.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sorry. I mean, where it currently is, the complex where it currently is.
Oh, currently is, yeah. They looked, they looked at that, yeah.
I don't think we're going to go anywhere near raising that.
They looked at multiple options beyond the couple of hybrids. They looked at, you know, probably six or seven different other combinations. And one of them was to raise the existing site at 20 Court Street and build a new police slash fire sub, fire station. So you'd basically have what you have now on the existing site, but to accommodate the, you know, the needs of, you know, the current needs of both departments. And it doesn't fit.
No, because it wouldn't expand for future expansion. I think we'd max it out if anything. And I don't want to talk to you guys either. I'm just trying to make sure we all have all the options and the understanding. So my concern is the response time. So say we move the fire department to Continental. Has, I want to make sure I'm not missing this information. What would that do for the response time at the other side of town?
What I can tell you is the options that are on the table do not, no option at this point that is being considered is to move the existing fire station from 20 Court.
Okay.
Is to keep that as the main fire station.
And then do a thought.
What's under discussion is do a substation out on 6 Continental, which several studies have shown that it is warranted and it would increase response time. It would be to provide better service to the residents, particularly because we have a railroad track that goes east-west across Exeter. And there has been situations where we have to, you know, the fire response has to wait for a train to go by to get to the north of town.
Yeah, we've been talking about this.
Because it's too far, they can't go over the Park Street Bridge because it's inadequate. They can go around Route 101, but by the time you get out to the highway on Portsmouth Ave and go up and come back to some spots, it actually loses, you know, it actually delays it compared to waiting for the train.
So the idea is the substation would be out off of Epping Road on Continental to help with that response time?
Correct. Yeah, and that's outlined in, there's some heat map studies. And the recent CPSM study did that. And they did heat map studies and response times on several options of where. And one of the options that they did examine was a substation at this location.
Yeah, thank you.
So Mr. Sharples, too, I think I know the answer, but just for the sake of, on the record, have we looked at any other properties other than Continental Drive? Have we exhausted, in other words, have we exhausted anyplace else in town?
Yeah, I mean, we looked at 3032 Court Street to test fit. We looked at our site on Holland Way. And that actually bubbled up to be one of the third most desirable option. We have a site off of Holland Way as part of the reservoir. The issue with it is, is when we looked, when we dug it into a little further, it doesn't have frontage on Holland Way. So we'd need access across private property to get there. Not to saying we couldn't get it, but that's a, it's called a CARO, a Controlled Access Right-of-Way. Even though the town owns Holland Way, the state still has a, when they gave it to us under the urban compact, they had a bunch of restrictions placed on it. And it's access restricted. So there's only one access on that frontage. So we'd have to share, find the neighbor, share with that. Not to say it could be done. But then the town, what I did, what I had... town, what I did, what I hadn't known until we got into this, the town was looking at a new surface water treatment plant because of the deficiencies of their surface water treatment plant right below the Exeter Reservoir, Exeter Reservoir on Portsmouth app. Well, in 2004, they actually designed a new surface water treatment plant right on that site. So we took it and we tried to see, could we fit, we took that design and see if, see if we could fit a public safety use on there that wouldn't conflict with that. And the answer is no. That, that if you, if you put a public safety, then that surface water treatment plant as designed in 2004 could never be built. Not that that's, you know, being proposed at any time, but it's like, that's where it makes sense at the exit, near the Exeter Reservoir. And it just didn't make sense to move away that Holland, Holland Way site. We also looked at parcels we may not have owned. And I did an analysis of, you know, because we wanted to keep it central. If you're going with a public safety complex, you can't put it in, you know, one side of town because then you're into a two-station model. So you got to keep at least the main fire station somewhere in town. And there's just no property, uh, that's undeveloped that's available within, I, I did like a mile radius so the gizzi, uh, the bandstand. And there just isn't. And then you'd have to purchase it anyway, even if there was, which would just add to the cost. So we, we examined, oh, you know, almost a dozen different options.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I mean, I have a couple more, but I also know the board received a very thoughtful, uh, thorough, uh, memo from the facilities committee several weeks ago, um, with regard to this. And I know Mr. Chair, Chris Weeks, you're here. Uh, did you want to speak to that briefly and represent the facilities committee and your thoughts?
Yeah, I can speak to it briefly. Hi, my name's Chris Weeks. I'm the chair of the Facility Advisory Committee. Um, yeah, we put together some recommendations after we were presented with all of the initial design options by La Valley Brensinger. Um, you know, it was, it was all very interesting. And I think at this point, we put forth a lot of different options. You know, they presented three of them. I think we added a couple more on. Uh, we supported what they brought forward. And I think the thinking behind a couple of the other options that we presented, um, one of them was, you know, maybe look at not having the substation on Continental Way as just a, a way to, um, make this affordable in a manner that, that the public can, can support. Um, not to say we, we shouldn't pursue it. I, I think I'd like to put everything out there and then get some feedback from the public as to what sentiment they have. Um, so that's why we asked them to look at, you know, have the police station on Continental Drive with the substation and without, so that we know what the costs are separately. Um, a couple of the board members, board members, a couple of the committee members, um, have memories of 15 to 20 years ago when substations, uh, did not pass on the ballot for the fire station. So I guess they're a little sensitive to the history repeating itself. And they, they just want to make sure we can address that. And, and I think, you know, into this process for the feasibility study, we've built in three public forums. Um, I know Dave is working on setting one up for sometime this month or next month.
May 4th?
So we hope to get some feedback.
May 4th.
Six o'clock, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. So we hope to get some early feedback from the public as to what they support. As far as the 30-32 Court Street, and I'll close on this one, um, one of the questions we have is, will the public sentiment favor having a police station that is located outside of town? Are they okay with that? Or is there going to be more of a stronger sentiment for having the police stay downtown? And that's a question we don't really know at this point. Um, and we'd like to get feedback on. The 30-32 Court Street is a challenging site. Um, I don't think it's impossible, but at the same time, if we can get early feedback from the public that they're okay with the police station being on Continental Drive, then that's, that's an easy choice to make. We'll just leave the 30-32 Court Street, um, to, to future uses as yet to be determined. So that's why we have that in there. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm partial to, uh, Selectboard Member Gilman's take on, on, she, she doesn't want to take down the old, uh, the boys' school. And, and I, I can see that. I share that sentiment as well. But at the same time, we just want to make sure that if there is overwhelming support by the public for a downtown police station, then it's something we, we just need to look at. That's all. Uh, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Before you sit down, didn't the facilities committee also talk about, uh, putting the fire department, the main department on a Continental Drive and having the public, um, safety complex be a substation with an expanded police area?
I think that was one of the things studied. I don't know if that was one of the options that was put forth. I don't believe. I think the main options include like the police station on Continental, um, the fire department stays downtown. And then there's, there's some sort of, you know, how deep do the renovations go to the fire department downtown?
And that goes to the call volume and, and location.
Right.
That's why the fire station downtown is, is, is really driven by that piece.
But on the other hand, um, in community planning, it's recommended to keep your police department downtown where people can see them and, um, you know, they have a presence. Um, and putting them out on, off Epping Road, I think would really just give us a perception that we don't have any police, police department.
If I, if I could add to that a comment somewhat, I mean, unlike with the fire, the fire department, you see them out on the road when they're responding to a call or an emergency. Um, the police are out. I mean, they're, they're out and about grabbing around town. Um, but also, I know, um, Chief, what's, what's the feasibility of maybe having, um, like maybe one officer in town? Is that something that you've considered, um, to appease folks that may want to have a police presence downtown?
Um, yes, we could have, uh, something like a substation, like a one-office substation downtown, like a community resource, you know, touchdown office at one of the places, you know, in, in here or at the, at 20 Court Street. They could just leave us an office over there. Um, we'll continue with our downtown foot patrols and we'll continue to be visible in this area. Um, but we can make it easier for people, you know, during the day and perhaps the evening as well. Have an officer go in there and, and write some reports and just be, be in that area.
Okay, great, thank you.
Can I just jump in on that? Uh, I did read about possibly keeping an officer here in the Wheelwright Room. Before we go that route, we have two meeting rooms in this building, this one and the Wheelwright Room. So we'd want to know how, what limiting that room for a meeting room and the times would matter. Hmm?
Said it would be bad.
I think it would be an issue.
That one, that was something that was thrown out off the cuff by one of our committee members. So it wasn't necessarily a-
I know. I just wanted to address it because it's in the memo.
Yeah. I mean, if, if that's not a viable option, then, then that's okay. That was just kind of an off-the-cuff idea for having people in the building.
Yeah, we had concerns about that just from a staff perspective as far as the, the look and feel of the town office, you know, having a, the equivalent of an SRO basically in the, in the town office building.
Right in the foot of the building as you walk in.
Lock the door.
Right. So that was a bit of a concern.
Not that we don't want you around. It's just, you know, we, we have limited space here as it is, so.
Yeah. It's, people were, I think they were just spitballing ideas. The other one was, uh, the cookie room at the town hall across the way. So I'm not sure if that's viable either. But either way, I, I think, um, you know, having an office at 20 Court Street probably sounds like the best option for, for a remote officer in the area.
So if we want to go way back in history, we'd move finance to the Court Street property, Parks and Rec Building, and put the police back where finance is, because that's where they used to be. Not enough room, but.
Could, could I address Ms. Gilman's question about, did we look at PD only at 20 Court Street? And the answer is yes. We, we looked at that and, and looked at, uh, like where do you put fire? And we thought, okay, fire, fire, main fire station at Holland Way. But moving them to Holland Way, based on the CPSM studies and the heat maps and the response times, that would, that would, we're trying to maintain or actually improve service. By keeping the main fire station at Holland Way in and of itself and PD here, uh, it would, it would reduce service in response times unless we did a substation out on Continental. So doing a standalone substation on Continental, a brand-new fire station on Holland Way and PD only down here didn't seem like the best option. But we, we looked at it. Uh, but it just, it didn't rise to the, to one of the recommended options.
Hmm. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Selectwoman Cowan, did you have any questions or comments?
Um, I have a lot of questions about if we're going to build a substation out on Continental Way anyway, like what the cost would be of that versus renovating a building. Um, and then I do think it's really important to have the abutters weigh in. Um, and it's not clear to me that we've heard from all of the people that we are going to want to hear from on that, on that.
Okay. So if you, if you couldn't hear her, she's, she wanted to know the cost of just building a substation out on Continental, which I know we weren't getting into cost tonight, but also she, she observed that we want to give abutters an opportunity to weigh in. And obviously, you know, some have, you have your community. We're going to have more than one forum, I would imagine, before this is-
Yeah, the first one's May 4th, uh, 6:00 PM over in the town hall. We'll advertise it aggressively. Um, we did have a public meeting at the FAC that we put out there and put on the website and so forth to see if we could get some interest and did a presentation on, 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 you know, it was televised. And we did a presentation to them, kind of went over all the options. I haven't gotten any input from that except the, the recent one that you got. Uh, but to talk about price, we have not priced, that wasn't an option that we pursued at this point. That's kind of one of the questions tonight was, we did not pursue a standalone fire substation at 6 Continental. What we looked at was, uh, as it would be part of a new PD.
Yep, okay.
So I don't have the numbers.
Okay.
You know, I wouldn't have a cost on that, but I could certainly, you know, something we certainly work on. But if I hear feedback, then it'll give me direction on, you know, where, where, where the next steps of this project go.
Well, I think obviously if we could, if we could work up those numbers, um, you know, I, I, I share Selectwoman Cowan's inquiry. But I think in addition for tonight, you're looking for direction, if I understood correctly from your memo, you're looking from direction, you're looking for direction from the board specifically to 30-32 Court Street and whether or not that should continue to be pursued as an option. Is that correct?
That's one.
That's one.
And then the second one is about the fire substation. If there is, you know, should, should we continue to pursue? Because that will depend. And hey, let me back up for a second. When you say numbers, where, these are rough order of magnitude numbers right now. It's based on concept designs. You're not going to get an accurate number until you go to a much more in-depth design. However, how many in-depth designs do you want to go into? Because they all cost money to pursue. And, and then to get to that point where you get that final number, if it's not going to be a reasonable or viable option, maybe we don't need to go there to get that number. So I don't know if I'd be able to get the number until, you know, on, on a standalone substation on 6 Continental, unless we were very serious about, you know, that and, and did a, you know, much more, uh, much more design than we have now.
Understood. So consensus of the board, I mean, 30-32 Court Street is not an option we would like to pursue.
I don't think so. Unless we started looking at cost of moving that building to it, piece of land, and that's adding cost, right? But yeah, that's a historic building and I just don't, I'm not comfortable with.
Mm-hmm.
Not there yet. That's going to take some thought.
We all in agreement? Selectwoman Cowan?
I agree with that. I would be very hesitant to raise that building.
So is the board then comfortable, um, requesting that, that moving forward with looking at option one and option two? I mean, I don't think really, Dave, I wouldn't put a whole lot into this until you have your, at least one community. Because to Mr. Weeks' point, you know, we all have opinions and as do you, but we'd like to hear from the community. So I think maybe pausing on that second question until we actually hear from folks in town. Uh, but I think for now, the answer to your first question is 30-32 Court Street would not be something that we would be interested in you pursuing. Either the chiefs, do you have anything else to add or comment?
Not, not unless you have any specific questions to what the substation on downtown. We'd be more happy to chat.
I mean, I think that's jumping the gun a little bit for tonight. I think tonight's purpose was to give Dave and the facilities committee and the chiefs some direction from the board as to where to pursue. Mr. Dean, did you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I just, I, I think that it was important to get that 30-32 Court Street question on the table and get some answers and feedback on that. And I think that helps the process going forward. Um, my only comment again was just to remember we're going from, in this process, we're going from a 6,000-square-foot police station to potentially an 18,000-square-foot station. And that's, you know, that's to fit all the modern needs of a modern police department. And that creates space crunches when you're talking about the downtown site. There's just not the room to expand the way we need to expand it. And so that's, that's one of the main reasons we're having a conversation about the police department and a fire substation out on, on Continental. One of the other points I'd make is that I, I noticed in the materials going way back, and this predates even my tenure as town manager, uh, the substation slash station conversation that happened back in, I think it was around 2003, they were talking about a 35,000-square-foot building in that report. And we're not, we're not talking about 35,000 square feet, um, in 2022 for the fire service. So just to kind of put things in perspective, I think that that might have been, I wasn't here for that. I didn't want to speak to it, but I, it, it bears no relation to what we're doing today. So we do have the, you know, obviously, Epping Road was perceived to be the site for a new, a new fire station, if you call it that, 35,000 square feet. Um, we're still out in the same general area, but we're talking about a 6,000-square-foot uh, fire substation along with an 18,000-square-foot police station. So it's a, it's a very, very different project than, than what was put out there back then. And, and again, back then, we weren't even considering the police, which has been a big part of how we're trying to come to a resolution on, of a modern solution for both departments.
That version was, was still called a substation, even though it was bigger than, than what we currently have as a fire station. So that, that's part of what killed it. It was the Taj Mahal.
Well, it's probably also fair to say that the facility needs of the community have changed in 20 years. I mean, number of calls, number of people. So I mean, I think, I think it's warrant discussion anyway.
Yep.
Uh, and I'm, and I'm satisfied with, you know, Chief Poole and offering to have a resource downtown for folks that may need. And, and again, you know, the, the police are out in the community. So I, I'm, I'm satisfied with that.
Yeah, so am I. You can save him a room. Save somebody a room.
So let's plug this one more time, Dave. May 4th, 6:00 PM.
Yeah, May 4th at 6:00 PM. I mean, we did do a presentation to the facilities advisory committee a couple of months ago. And we're, we're going to basically do that same, uh, presentation to go over all the options, the history, and then just ask for input from the public on the different options that we've come to. Because no, you know, no decisions have been made. It's still early. Uh, but thank you for your time because this has been invaluable because it really helps me, you know, kind of the way I strategize and move forward.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Dean, how else can we advertise this? Can we put it on the website maybe?
Uh, we can look to put it on the website, sure.
That'd be great. We'd like, I mean, obviously, we'd like to have good turnout for this.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay. Thank you, chiefs. Thank you, Mr. Weeks. Okay, next. Uh, Chief Wilking, um, engine five and the SCBA equipment.
Yeah, I think this will be more my, my, uh, agenda item.
I know, it's all them.
So we, so we had two, two bids on the lease purchase financing for the, uh, engine five, uh, replacement and also the fire SCBA equipment. And in your packet are both proposals. We did ask for a third from Newbury Port Bank, but they declined to, to, to bid on it. And the one thing I'll say is that the, the rates are really fluctuating, the interest rates, um, like on a daily basis, they're changing. And the rates that you have in the packet, the most advantageous rate to the town right now is TD Bank's rate, uh, coming in at 2.91% on both of the, uh, engine and the SCBA equipment. So what I'm looking for, if the board's okay with, uh, making a motion tonight, is that you'd accept that lease finance, purchase financing of the 2.91%, um, pending final review and authorize me to sign documents relative to the lease purchase. me to sign documents relative to the lease purchase. I think the one caveat and flexibility that I'd like to see is if we go back for a last best and tax exempt beats TD Bank on that, that we can move forward with the lowest at that point. But right now, I'd look for, to accept the 2.91% interest rate.
Any questions for Mr. Dean?
Sometimes on these, there's a lease resolution that comes with it, so, and it may need to be signed by the Chair of the Board.
Yeah.
And if that's the case, I'd bring that back at a subsequent meeting.
All right. I'm just, I'm trying to find the page, because the, our packet, our packet this week is upside, every other page is upside down, so I'm trying to keep up with you.
Yeah, this is the one for the TD Bank.
Okay.
Quote, they gave us a quote via email.
Yep, okay.
With the schedules.
All right.
I think I've got one more here.
And is this for both pieces of equipment?
It is. It's for both.
All right. Do you want two separate motions or?
Uh, yes, I think that would be good.
Okay, then that's what we shall get. And you're signing, as best you know, you're signing this?
Yes.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the TD Bank rate of 2.91% for the fire SCBA equipment and authorize the Town Manager to sign the contract.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan. I'll move on. Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
And Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. And Select Woman Cowan?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Excuse me. I would further entertain a motion to approve TD Bank's rate of 2.91% for the fire Engine 5 and authorize the Town Manager to sign the contract.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
This is Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan. Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan says aye. Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Thank you.
And next we have the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Agreement. It's in our packet.
Yes, this, sorry, no, I was just going to say, this is a little bit different than what I've seen in the past. There's certificate of authority by vote form in the back, and it talks about a meeting with, a meeting of the Board of Directors. And again, this is, these are forms that the state has furnished to us. So then it talks about the current bylaws and contractual obligations. So I think, I think the best I can do on this is to have the board vote to, if you're so inclined, vote to have me, to vote to accept the Household Hazardous Waste Agreement and authorize the Town Manager to sign documents relative to the agreement. That was the most I could pull out of this.
We usually get this presented to us by the RPC, and I see that the, the President Director of the RPC is, actually, this is his email. So would they be the authority that is providing the board descriptions?
Yeah, I would say no, because their exeter is the lead agency on the Household Hazardous Waste Collection.
No, yeah.
So we're the main sponsor. The RPC actually administers the collection.
Yep.
But we're, as a town, we're the, we're the sponsor of it. So it would be us.
Any other questions, comments?
Nope.
Seeing none then. I would entertain a motion to approve the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Agreement and authorize Town Manager to accept and sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan. Select Woman-
Aye.
Okay. Select Woman Cowan says aye. Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. And last, quick discussion on the 2022 Boards and Committees. By the next meeting, Select Woman Roundtree Olaf and I should have a revised draft of a document we started working on back in October, and that will encompass all of the suggestions and comments made by the board at that time. And certainly, Select Woman Belanger will be looking for your input as well on sorts of things. We talked about whether or not we were going to recommend term limits. We talked about scheduling and frequency or infrequency of certain committees, new committee member orientations, recruitment, et cetera. So we'll have that for the next meeting. Yes, and we have a lot of vacancies. I see, Mr. Dean, you have a document here in the packet that was incredibly distressing.
We do have some vacancies, and you can add, on the Historic District Commission, we've heard from Curtis today that he is not going to re-up either. So there's, that raises the amount of level vacancies to three full members.
If there are any architects out there, whether you do historic preservation or not, please contact Pam McElroy, a volunteer for the Historic District Commission. That makes two people we've lost in two months. And we're already down, we'll barely have a quorum.
So can I just ask about this document? The red are the people who have already committed?
Uh, the red, yeah. And the terms are?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, because I, I had preemptively talked to the two on the Housing Advisory Committee, so I knew that. But, okay.
So, Mr. Dean, I found this to be a little confusing, too. The names in red are up next.
I believe the names in red are ones we've heard from that are coming back.
That we will reappoint next meeting.
Correct.
Okay. So we have several that have not committed yet then, correct?
Right. We're waiting to hear from people.
Okay. Wow.
Peter Lennon said at his, at our last Facilities Advisory Committee that he is not going to re-up. But I'll let him make that communication. I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah, he is on the list, has no extension.
So the ones on the right are the people that already said they're not going to.
Oh, okay. I thought they were the ones you hadn't heard from yet.
So out of curiosity, Select Woman Roundtree Olaf, on the arts and culture, who are the two? Because we had a full, we had one drop off early on, correct?
Mm-hmm. And I can't remember the name.
Okay, yeah.
We had one drop off. David was the alternate. Scott Ruffner.
Tony Bruce.
Tony Bruce, yeah.
Mary Page.
So we had.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure why it says that.
Okay. All right, let's look into that. Mr. Dean, on the arts and culture, I think there's one vacancy here. There may not be a vacancy.
Okay. We'll check that out.
Look into that. Okay. All right.
And the Power Aggregation Committee, we had two, three people on it? Is someone not coming back?
We had five?
Well, no, it was just Cliff and Lou and-
There were at least two others, I think, that we appointed.
Okay. Nick Davenport and me. Me, sort of.
So I think, too, maybe giving thought for our next meeting, talking about, you know, we brought this up at the last meeting, but whether or not we can, if there are any committees we feel we can consolidate with others, or, you know, one that came to mind last time was the River Advisory. And then just also, you know, how frequent some of the smaller ones actually need to meet.
Heritage Commission already discussed it a couple of months ago, that we probably only need to meet quarterly or at the call of a demolition review or grant deadline.
Okay.
So.
Any other thoughts, comments?
No, I think once we go through that packet once more, some of it might solve, hopefully, some of these issues.
I think so. Select Woman Cowan, did you have any thoughts, comments?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, jumping to regular business then. Let me find my upside-down list here. I'll turn this over to you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, this is our Tax Abatements, Veterans Credits and Exemptions. First, we have an intent to excavate for MAP 113, Lot 5, for the year 2022, 2023. So I guess I move to approve it. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
All right, we have two disability exemptions. They are for the same amount. I would, at the board's indulgence, I would make one motion.
Yes, please.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a disability exemption in the amount of $125,000 for the tax year 2022 for the following properties. MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 331. MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 217. Second?
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
All right, I'm gonna do these ones separately because they're a little bit different, but I'd move to approve an elderly exemption in the amount of $152,251 for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 381. Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, I move to approve an elderly exemption for MAP 95, Lot 64, Unit 301, in the amount of $1,052, $152,251 for the tax year 2022. Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, the next is veterans credits. And again, if the board would indulge me, I will make one, well, two motions, but one motion for all of the amounts in $500.
Please do.
So, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a veteran's credit for the following properties in the amount of $500 for the tax year 2022. MAP 103, Lot 15, Unit 3. MAP 114, Lot 1. MAP 63, Lot 102, Unit 48. MAP 104, Lot 79, Unit 143. And MAP 103, Lot 13, Unit 2. Second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, I move to approve a veteran's credit for MAP 63, Lot 102, Unit 48, in the amount of $2,000 for disability and veterans credit for the tax year 2022. Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, I move to approve solar exemption for MAP 25, MAP 29, Lot 25, in the amount of $12,500 for the tax year 2022. Second?
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Okay. I move to approve a solar exemption for MAP 85, Lot 21, in the amount of $36,000 for the tax year 2022. Second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none?
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, and then the last thing is a land use change tax. I move to accept the amount of $19,500 from MAP 17, Lot 2, Unit 1, for the year 2007. Second?
Motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan said aye. Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, and the next we have, we have a letter from representatives of the River Run MHC, former Exeter River Landing, I'm sorry. Oh. Regarding a manufactured home that has been vacant for three or four years now and is in disrepair, and I believe the owner lives in Florida, and they are looking to, well, they have received consent from the owner to remove the manufactured home from the property and remove and dispose of the manufactured home. And I believe they are looking to the board to abate some past taxes. Is that correct, Mr. Dean?
Right. That's right.
And is that the total due, the 2,036, 34?
Yes.
So looking for an abatement of $2,036 and 94 cents.
This is again under RSA 82, 80 colon 2A. You're taking this action.
Okay. Could you repeat that RSA, please?
80 colon 2A.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
I do have a question.
Mm-hmm.
The abatement is for the owner of the mobile home park, or the mobile home is now in the ownership of the park itself?
The, as I understand the situation, the ownership, it does not lie with the park. It's still, it still lies with the prior, or the owner of record is still Ms. Abbott.
So we'd have to grant, who are we granting the rebate to?
The abatement would be for the owner, right? Ms. Abbott?
You would basically be waiving the taxes on it.
Correct.
So nothing would be given back to anybody.
No, I know, and I said, I used the wrong word. But what I mean is, I just wasn't clear who-
Gets the paperwork.
Who gets the paperwork?
Right.
It would be the person living in Florida.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because, yeah.
Right, the attorney that's handling the situation, we would go to him.
Okay, because then they'd have to have, there's been no exchange of deed, is what I'm, where I was going with that.
Right.
Okay.
And she's given permission, you see it in the.
Yeah, I saw that, I just wanted to make sure I was clear on the process, if you will.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So, you made a recommended motion?
I'm sorry?
You gave a recommended motion?
I haven't yet.
Okay.
Would you like me to?
Yes.
Is there a, so that's the 10479.
Yep.
So, I would entertain a motion that, under RSA 80 colon 2A, the Select Board abates total tax due of $2,036, $2,036 and 94 cents for parcel 104 dash 79 dash 602 for the tax years 2019.
Eighteen.
2019, 2018, 2019, 2020 and 2021.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair?
Aye, motion passes 5-0, thank you. Thank you for being patient, I'm trying to, every other page being upside down is slightly distracting. Mr. Dean, Town Manager's Report, please.
Yes, so today, we welcome Corey Stevens as our new Finance Director. Corey's first day was today. We filled up his day with all kinds of meetings and good, interesting financial and budget information, so just wanted to say how pleased we are to have him as our Finance Director. And for those of you at home who may be watching, Corey has been a key part of our Budget Recommendations Committee for a number of years, and he did apply for the Finance Director position when it became open, and it quickly appeared that he was the top candidate, and again, we're glad to have him. We heard a lot of great feedback from our Department Heads about his appointment, and so we're looking forward, everybody's looking forward to working with him going forward. So, welcome to Corey. Tomorrow, also, big news that we closed on Tenhampton Road. That happened last Friday. The closing went fairly smoothly with minor fanfare, but obviously, that's a big win for the town, and now people can park at Tenhampton Road if they're at the Rec Park for events, or using the Fields, or what have you, so that's an automatic dividend that's already being paid by Tenhampton Road, and you'll be hearing more about the plans for that in subsequent meetings, so congratulations to Parks and Rec, and I know they're excited about moving over, and we definitely have to do some renovations to the property before that happens, but we're on our way, so that's really great news.
And thank you to the voters.
Yes, thank you to the voters who supported it, that's right. Tomorrow, there's a ribbon-cutting event at Cobham, 10 o'clock in the morning. I'll be there, and this is something that's hosted by Cobham, along with Senator Shaheen will be there, and Congressman Pappas, so for those Board members that can make it, we'd love to see you there. And the, just a reminder that the Egg Hunt is April 16th, it's coming up on Saturday at 10 o'clock, so there's three groups that are going to go in tiers, age-wise, and hope to see everybody there. We're also, in Parks and Rec, we're working on a, the Parks Program. It's April 23rd through May 7th, and the details are on the website, so if people want, are interested in participating in that, they can go to the website and look at the details. And then, just the last thing on my list was just to set the goal-setting time with the Board, and I think we had talked about 5 o'clock on the 18th, if that worked for everybody, so I just want to throw it back to the Chair and the Board.
As far as I know.
We'd mentioned maybe 4:30, perhaps?
That could work.
Does that work for you?
That works well, fine.
Selectwoman Cowan, does 4:30 next Monday for goal-setting work for you?
I am checking my calendar. Yes, it does.
Okay, so 4:30, please.
4:30 it is.
And where are we going to meet?
We're going to try to figure that out. I think, I think we were aiming toward the Senior Center.
Okay.
Place that's a little bit more informal, where you can sit around a table and talk goals.
Okay, great.
So.
Anything else?
Great, thank you. Nope, that's it for me, unless there are questions.
I don't know how long I'll be in Concord, so if I am late, start without me.
Okay. Okay, next, we have Select Board Committee Reports. Selectwoman Belanger?
Sure, so I had a Housing Advisory Committee meeting last Friday, April 8th. We talked about the forum, the regional needs assessment coming up, and how much of that information is relevant to, or incorporated, I should say, into our housing assessment report, I'm sorry, our Housing Advisory Committee report. And it's about 98% of it, so that's how imperative that assessment is, and Dave Sharples, with the passage of the budget in March, is starting to look at our zoning, to see what we might be able to do for density in our downtown area, possibly Portsmouth Ave, to see if we could do something different with our density zoning, and see if that would help with housing needs.
Mm-hmm.
And I have Conservation Commission tomorrow night, and Planning Board Thursday night.
Busy week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Selectwoman Gilman?
All right, I didn't have any town-oriented meetings. I do have a Heritage Commission meeting on Wednesday, and the HDC meeting on Thursday was canceled. I would like to go through what's happening at the State House.
Please.
My committee went through 11 bills last week. On Monday, we started at 9:00 and ended at 7:30, because some of them were really popular. And I'm just going to talk about them by title, because some of them are complex. So, what we, what we talked about was one bill that is relative to noncompliance with municipal audit requirements, and it ends up that if you don't meet DRA's deadline, or, and you don't respond within 90 days of their notice, or whoever's notice, we can get fined. So, that's a new thing. The other, next was establishing a committee to study agreements between developers and municipalities on municipal trash removal paid by condominium owners and renters. Now, we've got, we get lots of bills from, that have to do with homeowners associations and condos that complain that they're not getting the services that the rest of us get, you know, in our single-family homes, or just single properties that are not in an And so, this one aims to just flat, flat-out, right, flat-out make any private road felt by a developer, or any private trash pickup included in the condo documents that the developers agreed to. Apparently, some developers work with the towns to pick up trash for their development or not, and I don't think we do. But the, so this bill is to, yeah, is to make them work together.
Most of that is written into the covenants of the original.
Exactly, but the testimony that we heard was, "I didn't know about it. Nobody told me about it."
It's a pretty common refrain.
Yes, it is. But that's just a committee, so I think that will go down, because the majority of the Board doesn't like committees. So, next was a relative to qualified private communities, and it's another one looking for tax breaks for condos. It has the developer establish what they call a capital reserve fund to upgrade their roads to town standards, so we will accept them. So, then there's the prohibiting planning and zoning ordinances that prohibit short-term rentals. That was the one that we spent hours on. Short-term rentals casually are, you know, Airbnb and Verbo as the platforms, but there's some concern that this may not affect Exeter very much, because I don't know how many properties really are interested in doing this, or, I don't know, but it really does affect the resort areas and the coastline. So, so this bill would just prohibit us from saying, you know, you can only have short-term rentals here, or any other kind of restriction. And it's a statewide one, so it would act the same on every town, even though every town has different needs, or, you know, whether they want them or not. The other thing, the other concern was that people would start advertising their apartments, if they have an accessory dwelling unit, or some other, other unit, a two-family, that would take rentable properties off the table. Next few don't really do anything. One is reducing the interest rate for abatements of paid property taxes from eight to four, I forget what it was, but it's a good thing. And then I had already mentioned Senate Bill 329, which is establishing a commission to study barriers to housing development in New Hampshire, including workforce and Property blight in cities, and then the last one is also a big one, probably RPC is looking into this one. It's relative to training procedures, the title is deceptive, for zoning and planning boards and financial investments and incentives for affordable housing development. It's, the relative to training procedures for zoning and planning boards is still a voluntary thing, it still says a person that volunteers may undertake training. What gets specific is that it puts it on the Office of Planning and Development, and they have to come up with the materials in the system. It still would be voluntary, however. One other part of this bill calls for the creation of a Housing Champion program, and so if you put these things into place, like the inclusive zoning, the various incentives, like 79E and the TIF, and the, what's the other zone, RSA 162, opportunity zones, if you add all these things together, being a Tree City USA is a good thing, Housing Champion municipality will have, go to the front of the line on state aid grants for, I don't, they didn't list particularly what kind of state aid grants, but for funds from the state. So, that's one I'm really interested in, that is getting a lot of heat. And then.
Attention or heat?
Okay. Well, yes. Well, it's, meaning that there are a lot of people who are against it.
Yeah, that's what I figured, that's why I wanted to make sure I understood.
And then I just wanted to, I'm sorry I'm taking so long, but there's a lot of things happening. I just wanted to go through, we've done crossovers, so my committee's hearing all the Senate bills, and the Senate's hearing all the House bills that were approved the end of March. And so, I want to get people to look at other things besides just the municipal. And you can sign on to the state website and look for these bills, and do a remote sign-in, they're still doing that, people are coming to the committee hearings now. Let's see. Health and Human Services has a bill, SB 403, which reestablishes the Supplemental Nutrition Program for Women and Children, or WIC, for Farmer's Market Nutritional Program, and it started out and then was discontinued. Transportation is listening, hearing SB 417 and SB 447, which are establishing an electric school bus pilot program, and establishing an electric vehicle and infrastructure fund. Ah, education, these are all in April, these are all tomorrow. Education has House Bill, in the Senate, the Senate Education Committee is hearing HB 1135, which requires a performance audit of the Department of Education, Education Freedom Account Program, because right now, there's actually no way to supervise where the money goes and how it's used. I could go on, but I'll just say there's a lot of good things going on and a lot of controversial things, and I urge people to visit the House website and do a search. You can look up by a word, so if you're interested in child and family things, you can just put in child, and all the bills will come up in front of you.
Yeah, I'll actually follow Julie by saying, I forgot to mention that James Murray testified on House Bill 1272 today on our behalf.
Oh, yay.
Was very good at trying to explain to the, to the committee the downside of restricting health officer's authority. So, thank you to James. He's actually one of the, there are many town full-time health officers, so it was really nice to have James be able to testify today.
Great, thank you, and thank you to James. Did you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Selectwoman Roundtree Olaf?
I have two meetings this week, didn't have any last week.
Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Cowan? Okay, thank you. I attended the Sustainability Advisory Committee last Tuesday, and the topic of conversation was putting together a single-use plastic ordinance for the town, which would only be applicable to town buildings, town property, and town permitted events. They're modeling it similar to Portsmouth's ordinance. We're trying to make it a little bit more understandable, because Portsmouth has some undefiined areas, but Kristin Murphy's actually taking the lead on that, and they will be coming to the Board at some point with that, but I think we're probably a couple months away. Okay, correspondence, we had, excuse me, a letter from the Arbor Day Foundation acknowledging Exeter's Tree City USA status, and we had a note from St. Vincent de Paul, expressing their gratitude for a grant in the amount of $2,000. And we had an email from an individual with respect to pickleball courts, and we will be revisiting that conversation with Mr. Bisson at our next Select Board meeting. We had a letter from the Board of Selectmen in Kingston, New Hampshire, and that's, they call themselves the Board of Selectmen still, and talking about some of the challenges that we've been facing with staff shortages and such, and suggesting regionalization, and they were talking specifically about the fire department. I know I've seen towns regionalize health officers or Boards of Health, but Chief, I haven't, I haven't seen many regionalized fire departments. What's your experience?
No, not at all. Good evening, and clearly, I should have read further down the packet before the, beyond 120 pages of height, so my apologies. I am aware of the letter, I attended a Seacoast Region Chief Fire Officers Meeting in New Market on Thursday, where the letter came up, and no one will stand here and dispute regionalization needs to be discussed, and no harm can come from sending a Select Board rep or a fire department official to Kingston at a date undetermined. That being said, regionalization throughout New Hampshire is few and far between, they cited a couple of towns I'm familiar with, and it works well when the communities are equally paired, very common in size and population, run demographics, and fire department size, and both Tilton Northfield and Camden Thornton, Tilton Northfield on the larger side of the house, they're all 6,000, 7,000 people each community, Camden Thornton on the smaller side, and they do very well together. The one thing that I know about those two examples is they actually created a fire protection district, and the district operates the same as a school district would, where they have their own legal district meeting, they establish their own budget, and they present the budget to the town for payment. they establish their own budget, and they present the budget to the town for payment. So, and, and I'm not here to speak one way or the other on it. I'll let you infer what you will. But with the voter turnout at, at many town meetings, we, we experienced an abnormally high vote, but I think we all would agree that we hope it's sustainable, but perhaps is not. And what we see in many of these districts is, is decisions are made on a significant-sized budget by a very small amount of people, and then the, the budget is handed over to the town. I think, uh, what we discussed in Newmarket, uh, and, and I thank the Kingston Select Board for sending the invitation, but what's, what it looks like is the need for communities along the 125 corridor, much the same size, with all fighting for one or two people in the fire station, often days, if not 24/7, could band together, do a common hiring practice, perhaps have employees that could cross borders and provide services to each other's town when they need it. Makes a ton of sense. To have Exeter jump into the fray and figure out how we would support with our seven personnel, that'd be an interesting discussion. Uh, and, and I look forward, and we would be willing to, to be the fire department rep on that report back, uh, would help the Select Board. But, but I think, uh, yeah. Um, in my 17 years in capacity, either Assistant Chief or Chief, we have been involved in three different communities, sometimes very behind the scenes, so as to not create a lot of angst amongst a volunteer, a predominantly call-volunteer department, with a community looking to help Exeter either provide ambulance service, dispatching service, combinations thereof. Most of the time, it kind of falls apart as the, as the discussion continues. It's just, would not be sustainable. It would be too costly for the town, so they've continued on. But, but this is certainly something to look into, but just not sure the benefit Exeter would see from it, and, um...
I have a couple of ideas. Um, I had thought about, we've had a couple of inquiries from East Kingston and Kensington, maybe, about sharing, uh, or taking on their ambulance calls. It's been a few years, but did we ever follow up on those?
I didn't want to use any towns. Um, but yeah, there's two more that have all discussed. Um, we entered into kind of discussions, we chatted about it, we talked about the model that it would be. Would we provide the service? Would it be paramedic service from Exeter? Uh, and often, um, let's just say it breaks down when we have to discuss who pays the bill. Does the, the, does a town that contracts Exeter, are they responsible to pay Exeter directly? And they seek insurance reimbursement? That's a far different picture than Exeter seeking insurance reimbursement, and perhaps non-payment for services outside of Exeter. We have, uh, like I said, and there are other towns, um, in the opposite direction of Exeter that have also inquired over the years, and nothing is, is currently in negotiative process. But, um, it, it, it all comes down to money. It shouldn't be a surprise.
Right.
What is it going to cost? How do we get reimbursed? How do we, are we made whole? How does a taxpayer of Exeter feel comfortable with us providing services without being reimbursed and paying overtime for positions while somebody's out of the station? And who's gonna, you know, who's gonna kind of pay that? I, resonating in my ears is, is the voice of the late George S. Amore, really discussing mutual aid. And is it really mutual if we're providing more out than we're receiving in? Where do you balance that? And, and unfortunately, being a town of 16,000 people and the largest department surrounded by predominantly call-volunteer outfits, obvious exception Hampton and, and North Hampton, it's tough, you know, because we end up offering a lot of services. Not to say we don't enjoy it, not to say we don't utilize our mutual aid partners when we have a big fire downtown. We need everybody we can get as well. But, yeah, it tends to be more one-way than both ways. So it's an interesting dynamic there, but...
Well, I, I was talking to people on, on my committee at the State House about, um, regionalizing things. And because I've, you know, uh, Stratum has their new-ish, relatively new, uh, police station and their fire station. And those are both, uh, their fire departments on call, right? Yeah. And then Brentwood has one that was relatively new. And so my, I, my idea was to first annex all the towns that used to make up Exeter. And that way, that'll solve your problem about billing, who does what billing. But, um, you know, housing our equipment at these different places, and that would relieve our issue of substations.
Yeah, we are, this is a very interesting region, and, and we love it to death because we live here. But in many ways, the thinking is very archaic, and we love our own little kingdoms and fiefdoms. We love to, to make decisions about our own assets, and we start talking about sharing assets, whether it's personnel, equipment, or stations. It becomes very prickly, and people get very passionate about it.
Mine is best.
Who purchased what, and what it's going to cost to replace. But, uh, it is interesting, so, uh... I never thought of annexing, though, because we'd own Newfields and Newmarket, Kingston, Brentwood, East King... Yeah, we'd have it all back, so...
Not Stratum, though.
But I look forward to the date. I don't know who should reach out, in fairness, Mr. Chair. It sounds like the Select Board, and we need to kind of compare dates and throw some...
Is the board interested in having Chief Wilking, I mean, I'm happy to attend with you.
Yeah.
What do we think?
Have fun.
I bet that buys a cup of kaku if we go, you know?
I mean, I'd be interested in listening to what you come from it, but, yeah, I'm not.
Cool. If you parked our apparatus in Kingston, I think we'd have some pretty upset people. Same with Stratum, actually.
Well, Kingston wasn't part of Exeter, and neither was Stratum, so there you go.
We can't get Kingston?
Yeah.
All right, so why don't we talk back channel?
A discussion doesn't hurt.
No, that's right. The manager, he'll discuss dates and see what's going on, but thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Chief. Uh, all right, so we talked about that pickleball. Um, we had a letter from Dragon Mosquito Control informing us that, uh, the mosquito control program begins this week. And last but not least, the legislative bulletin from the NHMA.
That's what people should look at, rather than me droning on.
We can do both. So the board calendar, next Monday, the 18th. Goal setting, uh, at 4:30 PM. Next board meeting is April 25th. And then looking into May, uh, Mr. Dean, we got that far ahead, May 9th?
May 9th.
And, uh, do we have a second date in May?
Uh, I believe that 3rd, Monday.
Okay.
The 23rd?
23rd.
Is Memorial Day the 30th?
30th.
Okay, so the 25th, the 9th, and the 23rd, done. Fantastic. Chief Wilkin?
Since I produced it, uh, and we're here, for the good of the order of public economy, you want a quick note on COVID?
Please.
Where we are. Uh, Exeter had a couple of very good weeks a few weeks ago. We had a week that the town only had seven, and the next week, five, uh, COVID-positive residents, and the whole region was looking great. And then the BA2 subvariant of the Omicron, uh, thing hit, and Exeter has had a couple of weeks that were still not terrible. Last week, we had 41 residents, this week 33. But what we are seeing, or I guess I should say better English, what we are not seeing is a large influx in patients in the hospital. Uh, we are not seeing a high mortality rate. For the past couple of weeks, the, the entire state has had, well, this past week, three fatalities due to COVID. So the numbers are very, very small. What's bearing true is that the, this subvariant is not that, uh, you know, the difficult string to fight. There are so many different ways they're doing oral, as well as many of the, um, the vaccinations, the second booster, I guess, to say. We've had two shots and then two boosters are out, available in all of the pharmacies. Uh, no lines, no waiting, um, and, uh, you can do that. So the numbers are remaining consistent, but higher than what we were like. We saw seven and five, and we're all thumbs up, and then 41 and 33, but...
But I, I think the true, the true number to look at is hospitalizations, because I think with testing now, it's being done or not being, you know, really recorded. People are, exactly, people are testing at home. The testing sites have closed.
Yeah, all statewide and, and, and Public Health Network-run, both test sites and vaccination sites have been closed. All of the vaccination hardware, refrigerators, vaccination paraphernalia, we have pushed back to the, the county or the Public Health Network, uh, and they in turn have collaborated with the state. So the fire department is no longer in the vaccination business. If the need arises, we'll jump back into both feet, but, but today, we're just kind of on the, on the periphery, kind of watching and, and hoping that we can move into the summer and get these numbers much smaller. But we're hoping this little subvariant burns itself out as quickly as the Omicron variant did. As predicted, four to six weeks, it ramped up, it came down, and the numbers looked great. So we're hoping the same happens with this little variant.
Let's hope so.
Only time will tell.
Exactly.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the update.
I just have one question on the second booster. Can I just walk in? Do I get any record, or do they need to know when I got the last one?
My wife, yes. Yes, yes, yes. My, my wife and I both received the, the vaccination. Uh, it's an easy, quick process. We registered, we, I guess, um, that's not the right word.
Signed up?
Yes, through a local pharmacy. They invited us, and we had, they had room that day. But you do need to show your original two vaccinations, and if at all possible, when your first booster was, whether it was October, November, or whatever. Um, and, but I was not able to find, you know, silly me, my first booster, third shot, and they gave me the shot anyway. So it's, I guess I trust really, I guess, so like, they allowed me to have. But you do need some information, um, but all the pharmacies are taking, uh, right now, there's no lines that day you can schedule.
So it's anybody over 50 or over?
Over 50, I believe.
And four, four months out from the booster?
Four or five. I heard five, but if you...
I got an email from the pharmacy where I got my first booster, with all of that, yeah.
Yeah. I think even if, I mean, most of them were October, November, so do some during February. We're already at the, the five-month mark, but, but I, it could have been four months.
Okay, all right.
Well, Chief, I just, can I just say, because I wasn't on the Select Board when, I'm glad you're out of the vaccination business right now, and I hope you don't ever have to go back into it. But I watched all the Select Board meetings and your reports, and I'm going to just take a moment to thank you. And you, your department, James Murray, literally, you guys ran this remarkably. And I think it really has helped to keep our town healthier than it could have been, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Good people, help, make good leaders. I mean, these, the people I have really did a great job, and they're the ones to thank, and I'll pass it on, so.
Thank you.
Perfect, not a problem.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, um, I would now entertain a motion to enter into non-public under RSA 91A 32E.
So moved.
Second?
Madam Clerk?
Selectwoman Rantrioloff?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
And the clerk says aye. Mr. Chair?
Aye. Board will be moving into non-public. Thank you.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get...